Thank you for joining us this evening, regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council on August 11th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sausetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Bill Coons is going to lead in the invocation and Councilmember George Glover is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. Father, we lift the city of Park City before you. We lift the council members before you today. Father, I pray that they will seek your wisdom as they conduct the good business of Park City. Give them wisdom. Father, may they do what is truly best for the people of Park City. Bless each council member as they are taking out of their busy schedules. Bless the mayor. Bless the employees of Park City. We thank you, Father, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The first item is approval of the agenda. Brandy?
I'd make a motion to add item 18 to the agenda, a right-of-way agreement released for property located near the intersection of 69th and Broadway.
And Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay. You've got a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero. We don't have anything... Well, we have for awards and presentations tonight. Dana, would you like to come up and introduce our newest asset?
I would be very happy to do so. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you are aware, the city has contracted with Helmut Media and Logistics to manage our social media. And tonight I have the pleasure of introducing you to the face behind that, which is Matt Helmut. And if you want to just come up here, Matt, and try to... We're going to try to keep some social distance here. Matt, we're looking forward to him managing this. And what that means is that he will be addressing our website, our Facebook, Twitter, those social media platforms, and working on Channel 7 as well. He's going to bring some great experience to us, which includes that he manages the social media for Radigan at Wichita State University. He has built his own personal website, which if you're interested, I'm sure he would like for you to check that out, sportsmandatabase.com. You can look at that, and he built that from the ground up, and it's a very good resource. And once again, we're looking forward to him bringing his experience and his personality and his twist to our social media. So, Matt?
Yeah, thank you, Dana. There's a lot going on here in Park City, as I've learned the last couple of weeks, and I'm very excited to be here. And I've already got a good start. Everybody around here is very friendly and looking forward to continuing and working with everyone. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right. We don't have anybody signed up for public forum this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports with our city administrator. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of things to update, Sean. First of all, 61st Street Bridge, as I mentioned last time, construction is complete. This time pavement markings are complete. The area's been cleaned up. Bare spots have been seeded. It's scheduled for its final walkthrough on August 19th, and there's a picture of it. An aerial taken by Matt as of this morning. So, it's a very nice-looking bridge. Second of all, Public Works received its new street sweeper machine this morning. They conducted training most of the day, and they should just start deploying it by the end of the week, giving them some time to register it and tag and title it. So, it's very nice with the three-foot vinyl wrap of the city's flag on the side of it. And then finally, the last item is the council is aware, we applied for the KDOT cost share program with Valley Center earlier this year for proposed improvements at 77th Street, also known as Ford Street and Valley Center, in the intersection at Broadway. Two weeks ago, the governor announced the winners, and although our project was not selected, KDOT has awarded or approved the project under their Economic Development Program. The programs are virtually the same, whereas it's done on a cost-share basis, whereas 30% of the cost will be shared between Park City and Valley Center, and 70% of the cost will be borne by KDOT. Brent Clark, the city administrator for Valley Center, and I are working on developing a scope of services for the project design with a local engineering firm at this time, and we'll be bringing that back to council probably at the August 25th meeting. So, good news.
Awesome. Does anybody have any questions for Sean?
Lighting on the 61st Street Bridge, will there be like streetlights or something like that?
There are supposed to be six, seven? Six lights, yes, sir.
Are they already on? They'll be installed later.
Being installed at a later date, yes. Thank you. Sure.
I think if you go back to the picture, and there's a mounting... You can't really see them there. But there are mounting spots for posts to be mounted on that. I was looking for those the other day. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Not seeing any. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the consent agenda, as presented, be approved.
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero. That brings us to item five under new business, which is hold a public hearing and consider the approval of the resolution leveling assessments for delinquent recycling and trash fees. I'll open that public hearing at 7:07 PM. Marlo, did you have anything you'd like to add to this?
I do want to let you know that on the list that I gave you on July 28th, one person has been removed, so it's down to three people. And I checked before I left today, and those three people still have an outstanding balance.
I'll ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak on this item. Not seeing anybody. We will close this public hearing at 7:07 PM. And the next item is for council to take action, if there is a recommendation. Brandy?
I move to approve Resolution 1048-2020, a resolution approving the report from the city clerk identifying delinquent trash collections and recycling fees to be certified to the county clerk as assessments against a real, related real property, all as provided for in Section 15-606 of the City Code and KSA 653410.
And George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seen any discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight, zero. That brings us to item six, which is hold a public hearing and consider approval of resolution leveling assessments for delinquent stormwater fees. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:09. Marlo, did you have anything you want to add to that? Please. Like 30 seconds at least.
Basically, same list in your packet, minus the one person that paid. You all... I sent out letters providing the public notice. They were mailed on July 31st that the public hearing would be held tonight, August 11th, 7 o'clock. And I don't think anybody showed up, so...
Did you get paid after the notice went out? So, that was how they got notified?
Pardon?
Did we get the one caught up based off of the notice that was sent?
Actually, he kind of did it in between the... me sending out the packet.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone. We'll close this at 7:10 PM. And does the council have a recommendation? Brandy?
Move to approve Resolution 1049-2020, a resolution approving the report from the city clerk identifying delinquent stormwater fees to be certified to the county clerk as assessments against the real, related real property, all as provided for in Charter Ordinance Number 37-2015.
George?
I'll second the motion.
You've got a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight, zero. Thank you. That brings us to item seven, which is hold a public hearing and consider approval of the 2021 City of Park City budget. So, we'll open this public hearing at 7:11 PM. And Dee, if you'd like.
Good evening. The Notice Budget Hearing for this was published in the Ark Valley News on July 30th. The total expenditures budgeted or published were the amounts that went out in version seven of the budget, which is the last Excel document I emailed to you. It's also the one that was in your packet for tonight's agenda. The total expenses of $21.2 million that were published included the $6 million in cash carryover of the general fund and the bond and interest fund that we budgeted this year for the first time. The estimated mill levy is the same as last year's final mill levy of 44.641 mills. Just a reminder, if you approve the budget as presented tonight, we'll need each of you to sign the budget certificate before you leave tonight. Marlo has that, so...
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Dee? Not seeing any. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Not seeing anyone. So, we'll close this public hearing at 7:12. And is there a recommendation from the council? Brandy?
Move to approve adoption of the 2021 City of Park City budget in the amount of $21,211,600 with an estimated mill levy of 44.641 mills.
And George?
I'll second the motion.
And we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero. That brings us to item eight, which is consider approval of the 2021 Land Bank budget. Dee?
The Kansas statutes require that the governing body approve and review and approve the land bank budget before the Board of Trustees can adopt it. The Notice of Budget Hearing for the Land Bank was published in the Ark Valley News on July 30th. The total expenditure amount published was $302,943. If the council approves this budget, next on the agenda is a land bank meeting. There will be a public hearing held and then potential adoption by the Land Bank Board of Trustees. And again, this is a second certificate, so if it passes as presented, Marlo has another second certificate that needs signed for the budget.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Dee? Tom?
I don't have any questions. I was going to make a motion.
Okay.
As long as there aren't any questions, so... Okay. I would move to approve the 2021 Park City, Kansas Land Bank budget in the amount of
And Jim?
I second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero. Dee, how much time do you think we need for the recess?
I might defer to Sean on that. There's a lot of topics that weren't mine on there.
Ten minutes at most, sir.
Okay. Is there a... Jim, did you have a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we recess for 10 minutes.
Okay. And Brandy?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero. At 7:21, as soon as Ted? Are we good, Ted? Okay. And we'll move on to item 11, which is discuss and consider a resolution for the sale and command of certain properties to Hartmore Arena LLC. Hartman.
Mayor and Council, Sarah wasn't able to be here tonight, so I'll take this. This is one that comes up from time to time. It's a reconveyance of an industrial revenue bond transaction. The bonds have been paid off. City holds title to the land while the bonds are outstanding, and when they're paid off, we are obligated to reconvey it or deed it back to Hartmore, Hartmore Arena LLC. That's what this is. It is a zero-sum transaction, no fiscal impact on the city, and it's our obligation under our industrial revenue bond agreements.
Okay. Tom?
I would move to approve Resolution 1050-2020, a resolution of the governing body of the City of Park City, Kansas, authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain properties to Hartmore Arena LLC.
And John?
I'll second, and then I'll just kind of clarify, this means that they're back on the tax rolls now? Does that mean IRBs are done?
You know, yes.
That's correct. That's correct.
I didn't know if they were off earlier. I didn't know if it was... if the tax exemption ran the whole duration of their bonds. But either way, this would... if they aren't already back, they would be now.
And can I ask like what the impact is on that? Any idea at all?
No, sir. Not at all. I can get back to you.
I can answer that for you. They're actually... They've been off the tax rolls since 2017, and so these are back on our tax roll, and they're about 200 and... or no, I'm sorry, that's the other one. This one came off this year, I'm sorry. It's about 260,000. Total. That's their total for the countywide, so ours was that point or three more mills out of that.
So, this one is 200,000 or the one in 17?
This one.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight, zero. That brings us to item 12, which is discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of making of improvements on Ironstone Village additions water distribution. Sean?
Yes, sir. If I may, the next five items are all similar. They're all dealing with Ironstone, related to petitions for various different improvements. The first one is for the water distribution system. The attached petition was filed with the city clerk proposing the improvements. It was signed by owners of records on all of them now for more than 50% of the area liable for the assessment for the proposed improvements, and therefore such improvements can be made without notice or hearing as required as KSA 12-6A01. The improvements as far as water include a water distribution system, including necessary water mains, pipes, valves, hydrants, meters, appliances to serve the area described as the improvement district. The improvement district assessed on this particular one for water would be lots 1 through 12, Block A; lots 1 through 3, Block B; lots 1 through 6, Block C; and lots 1 through 7, Block D, of the Ironstone Village addition to the City of Park City. It's proportioned equally between all lots, and it is apportioned such that it will be assessed against the improvement district and 0% paid to the city. The total estimate of probable construction costs for the water is $119,000.
Does anybody have any questions for Sean? Tom?
I'll go first. I'd move to approve Resolution 1050-2020, a resolution determining the advisability of making certain internal improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making and the improvements in accordance with such findings, water distribution, Ironstone Village addition.
And John?
I'll second it, but just clarify, it was 1051 on the resolution number. Make sure he's okay with that.
Pardon?
Resolution number is 1051-2020.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Yes, did I not say that?
You said 1050.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight, zero. That brings us to item 13, which is discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of making of improvements in Ironstone Village additions. And this is for the sanitary sewer system. Sean?
Yes, sir. The only thing to highlight on this particular one, the estimate of probable construction cost is 210,000. And as far as the improvement district, they wanted to extend the sewer line a little bit farther to where it makes it easier to connect on to in the future. So, in addition to lots 1 through 12, Block A; lots 1 through 3, Block B; lots 1 through 6, Block C; and lots 1 through 7, Block D, of the Ironstone Village, it also includes lots 12, 14, and 15 of Block J, High Ridge Second Edition. So, on the petition, there is a total of five different signature blocks. The last one is not signed, but it is still signed by more than 50% of the properties included, so it therefore meets without notice of public hearing as required by KSA 12-6A01.
Jim?
I would move to approve Resolution Number 1052-2020, a resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, sanitary sewer, Ironstone Village
Brandy?
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight, zero. That brings us to item 14, which is discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of making of improvements in Ironstone Village additions paving improvement. Sean?
Yes, sir. On this one, the estimated probable construction cost is $421,000, and it is... the benefited district is the exact same as the water, so it is strictly related to Ironstone Village blocks A, B, C, and D. And again, like to highlight the fact of the method of the assessment is equally between all lots, where 100% would be assessed against the improvement district and 0% assessed to the community.
Okay. John?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 1053-2020, a resolution determining the advisability of making certain internal improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, paving for Ironstone Village additions.
George?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have one question. Is this...
Looks like they have the option of 15 and 20.
Usually it's 15 or 20, but... The resolution doesn't state as such. Did you hear her, sir?
I did.
15 or 20, usually 15, assessed at the time that the actual improvements are made and assessed to the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Got a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight, zero. That brings us to item 15, which is discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of making improvements in Ironstone Village additions stormwater drainage. Sean?
Yes, sir. Number four, the estimated cost of probable construction is $418,000. This one is similar to the sanitary sewer, to where if you're doing drainage work, you're going to extend it farther downstream. So, in additions to blocks A, B, C, and D of Ironstone Village, it also includes lots 14 through 21, Block I, and lots 12 through 21, Block J, of the High Ridge Second Edition for the City of Park City, Cedric County, Kansas. It's a total of 46 lots as a benefited district. So, on the petition where there are a total of six signature blocks, again, the last two are for the land bank, and therefore it still meets the 50% requirement.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions? Brandy?
Move to approve Resolution 1054-2020, a resolution determining the advisability of making certain internal improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing the making of improvements in accordance with such findings, stormwater, Ironstone Village additions.
And Jim?
I second that.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight, zero. That brings us to item 16, which is discuss and consider a resolution determining the advisability of making improvements in Ironstone Village additions bike path. Sean?
Yes, sir. On this one, it's important to highlight that the improvements will include the construction of a 10-foot-wide hard-surface bike and pedestrian path to serve the improvement districts defined below, all in accordance with the city standards, plans, specifications as approved by the city engineer, and our connectivity plan. The estimated cost would be $214,000. The improvement district contains a total of 141 lots. Again, will be lots 1 through 12, Block A; lots 1 through 3, Block B; lots 1 through 6, Block C; lots 1 through 7, Block D, of the Ironstone Village addition to the City of Park City. It includes lots 1 through 58, Block F; lots 1 through 7, Block G; lots 14 through 45, Block I; lots 12 through 25, Block J, of the High Ridge Second Edition to the City of Park City, Cedric County. Again, equally assessed between all lots, 100% assessed to the improvement district, 0% to the city.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Brandy?
Move to approve Resolution 1055-2020, a resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the City of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for making improvements in accordance with such findings, bike path, Ironstone Village additions.
And Tom?
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Sausetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight, zero. Thank you, Marlo. Now we get to go to a lighter part of the meeting and move on to item 17, which is discuss and consider amendments to the exterior grant paint program.
Yes, sir. Last month, council approved the exterior paint program that provided up to $250 for paint supplies to qualifying homeowners, but limited the participation to owner-occupied single-family homes. Mobile homes, rental properties, duplexes, and other multifamily dwellings were not included at the time in the program. After a resident came to the council and requested it, it has been requested that council reconsider the program's omission of mobile homes. Additionally, staff was directed to make changes originally to the application by omitting questions related to any demographics, and to set up the program on a reimbursement qualifying, reimbursement-type basis for qualified applicants versus issuing of vouchers. There is no additional financial impact, as council approved ten thousand dollars originally from the MTBE fund for twenty-twenty, and there is a copy of the updated exterior paint program application showing that the demographic questions have been removed, so.
George?
Yeah, I think this is the right thing to do. Not everybody lives in the single-dwelling homes. A lot of people live in mobile homes, and I think it was only the right thing to do to include that. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve amendments to the exterior paint program.
Jim?
I'd second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight-zero. That brings us to item eighteen, which is discuss the right-of-way agreement released for property located near the intersection of Sixty-ninth and Broadway. Sean, or Doug?
Mayor and council, this is the item that was added to the agenda, and it was added because of a time consideration. The developers of the property, approximately eighty acres north of Sixty-ninth Street on the west side of Broadway, have a slight title glitch, and this is our part of trying to correct that as soon as possible so that they can close this transaction next week. What this asks the council to release is an old, almost ninety-year-old right-of-way agreement that was made that kind of affects what would be the, kind of the half-section line of that section up there. The developer, I think, is in the southeast area of that. The land on the north is owned by Lou Rebelli and his Murdoch Properties LLC. Keechai Township has an interest, not sure what that is, but Sean's been in contact with Lou and with one of the officers at Keechai Township, and has arranged for them to come in tomorrow to sign a similar release. What this will do is just do away with any sort of title issue on the entirety of that seventy-six odd acres that is being developed up there so that they can close and have clear title and no obligation to allow people to go across that north end of their property.
Okay. Thank you. Brandy?
I don't have any questions. Do I move to approve the release of the right-of-way agreement affecting lands near Sixty-ninth Street North and Broadway, and authorizing the mayor to sign the release?
I'll...
I'll second it.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight-zero. That brings us to closing comments, and we'll start with Jim.
Don't have any comments tonight.
Brandy?
I don't have anything tonight.
And George?
I don't have anything.
Tom?
Don't have anything.
Melvin?
Doesn't.
Ben?
Nope.
George?
Yeah, I included some places that people can get help. I wanted to include one more. It's called Center of Hope. Phone number's two six seven, zero two two two. They only take calls on Monday from nine to two. So if any of those folks that are out there, in lieu of COVID-nineteen, their employment has stopped, you can access these folks to get help with your rent and/or utilities. So I'm sure there are folks that are out there. Go ahead and call them. Two-on-One Kansas, United Way. There's other resources as well that I've included in the past, so you can, I guess you can call up here and get the information. And also want to let people to trust, have faith and trust in the Lord. Thank you.
Sir, what time were the...
Nine to two.
On what day?
Mondays only.
Mondays only. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And John?
Only thing I have, the Commission Tourism Meeting for September is on the September first. It's on Tuesday, however, right now there's no agenda items, so may not have a meeting. So, I won't give it out. Thank you.
All right.
I would make a motion we adjourn.
Jim? Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight-zero. Thank you.